...for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Standing for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Do we have any citizen concerns that are not currently listed on the agenda?
Good evening, Flori. I would like to ask the question and request a copy of, if this is available, a copy of the MOU with, that's been drafted for Rolling Hills and also a copy of the transition plan that's been drafted.
Yeah, certainly public information that's been made available.
Sure, and do you have any meeting dates? Because I have not been able to locate any dates when you're meeting with Rolling Hills. I know that the dates are listed when you meet with Sioux Rivers, but there's nothing with Rolling Hills.
Yeah, we can certainly publish their...
We're not officially there, so are we...
Well, it's publicly made, information that's made available, so... And if you go to a Rolling Hills site, all their meetings are listed.
I'm asking Woodbury County.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Michelle, is that... So, it was a memorandum understanding that was approved by this board?
Drafted. It was Rolling Hills' MOU with Woodbury County that they're looking at the... What their demands are and their requests are from Woodbury County to join Rolling Hills. There's a MOU.
Okay, has it been presented here?
Yeah, it's all past information. It's on the Woodbury County site. Would the Auditor's Office be able to help Ms. Lee to locate that, or...
That item, if it's a MOU that has two or three counties that the other counties did not sign and Woodbury County signed, I have a MOU that has not been posted to the web yet because of the lack of the signatures, but I understand that those signatures are not going to happen, at least so I can post it with just the Woodbury County...
I think that, I think you're talking about a different one. I think you're talking about the first one that was with, presented here for...
Sioux Rivers.
Sioux Rivers. But this is an MOU that, for Rolling Hills to go into Rolling Hills, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and has that been presented?
That's been passed and signed. It's been a part of our backup. It's been published to the public.
Then, then it should be on the website.
It should be on the website, and I can check when the backup office finds out.
Thank you, and the transition plan?
That can be made available. That's part of the Rolling Hills' published meeting minutes as well.
All right, thank you.
The next, excuse me, the next meeting for Rolling Hills is Wednesday, October 24th, 2:00 PM at the Harry Rasmussen Building in Sac City.
Where are you finding that, Mr. Reddick?
Their website.
Okay. If we could share that with Ms. Lee.
The next meeting for Rolling Hills region is Wednesday, October 24th, at 2:00 PM at the Harry Rasmussen Building in Sac City.
Thank you.
Any other citizen concerns that are not on the agenda?
Diane McTier, Juvenile Detention. I'm bringing today, just for information, that it is time for our food contract to be re-signed and whatever amount that they're going to charge us. And the contract has been done. Everything has been sent to CBM. They are the ones that are, received the bid. Nobody else posted it in the paper. Nobody else showed any interest, only CBM. So, once I get the cost and everything back, then I will present it to you formally. And the other thing is, there is a program through the Federal Food Service that they have grant money when you're replacing a kitchen or appliances in your facility that is used for the food program. And I presented all that information to Ryan Webber, the Director of Detention, and he's going to look into it and see if we will apply for that grant. Any questions? Okay, I don't have an amount. I'm sorry, I thought it would have been done sooner, but I didn't get it done sooner. We're behind schedule.
Okay, thank you. Any other citizen concerns not on the agenda? Hearing none, I will move approval of today's agenda.
Second.
Motion by Duett, second by Reddick, for approval of today's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Pass five to zero. Items three through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three, approval of the minutes of the September 25th, 2018 meeting. Four is approval of claims. Five, board administration, approval of resolution for a tax abatement for Anthon Community Fire Department. Six, secondary roads, consideration of permit for work in the county right-of-way for Northern Natural Gas. Seven, county auditor, receive Carl Braun as Concordship Trustee. Are there any questions for the consent agenda items?
I'd move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Reddick, to approve consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Thanks, Joe. Item eight, Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence. Approval and presentation of proclamation for Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Would you like me to read the proclamation?
Sure.
I was afraid you'd say that. Proclamation for Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence.
I got it right.
I do. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime affecting individuals and families in all Siouxland communities, all races, ages, income levels, lifestyles, and sexes, and in fact is probably affecting someone you know. And every nine seconds, someone experiences the crime of domestic violence. And whereas, one in three women will be a victim of violence in her lifetime. Domestic violence violates an individual's human rights by destroying dignity, security, and self-worth due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. CSADV works every day to help end these acts of violence and to help rebuild the lives of their survivors. And whereas, the Siouxland, in Siouxland, the Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence is available 24 hours a day and last year responded to nearly 2,000 victims, provided 11,026 nights of shelter to 413 adults and 305 children fleeing domestic abuse. And despite high census, no one in an unsafe situation was turned away. And whereas, the impact of domestic violence affect all the members of the community and only a coordinated community response will put a stop to these atrocious crimes and assure funding is continuously available to provide these life-saving services. And now therefore, I, Rocky D. Witt, Chairman, on behalf of the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Woodbury County, Iowa, and urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled events and programs and to think about the fact that it is someone you know. So be it resolved on second day of October, 2018. Any questions or comments? I will start by saying I also get to work the security post in the courthouse here, and I don't know how many times a week I see people coming in of all walks of life, asking where the Clerk's Office is or just asking simply, where do I go to get a protection order or so forth.
That's absolutely correct.
It is a little bit alarming, to say the least, that we have so many people coming through our doors that I get to direct them to the right office.
Unfortunately, the incidences of domestic violence are not going down, and it affects every walk of life. It really is someone you know. Could be your daughter, could be your mother, could be your coworker. Anyone can be a victim of domestic violence. And domestic violence can affect primarily women, but men are impacted as well, and we have provided services to men.
In fact, as a security note, I was there the day and got in the middle of it that day that a, two ladies of different ages and about three kids came in and asked where to go for a protection order, so I guided them in the right direction. Within about five minutes, a male member came in the courthouse, asking where to go to file for a paper, thinking nothing of it, and within about 30 seconds, the lady was screaming. And we were over there in seconds and put a stop to it. And I know Lieutenant Armstrong was there at the time later that day, and it was kind of an involved and intense situation, so...
You know, domestic violence calls are the most dangerous. You just don't know what's going to happen.
Exactly.
And I want you to know that we have an advocate at the Clerk's Office every day of the, Monday through Friday, and we also have an advocate over at the Police Department. And that's for anyone who comes and needs assistance or information in terms of what their options might be in regard to domestic violence. Any other questions?
Unfortunately, Rocky, you only see the ones that are able to get here. That's true.
And there's many silent victims out there that don't want to come forward, and that's why our awareness media is so important. We continue to try to get the word out. Our crisis line, did we have a number in there for the crisis line? It brings every day, throughout the day, throughout the night, in terms of individuals who are having difficulties. So, it is a prevalent issue in our community, and everyone should be aware to be able to help that survivor to get to services. Whether you know our number, want to come up to the agency, we have many, many Watkins, law enforcement bring individuals to us, day and night, 24 hours a day. And we have advocates on call that can see that individual at the hospital or other safe place in the middle of the night, just to let them know that help is available. Help is available at no charge, and we're sorry, what they're going through has happened to them. Basically, our message, and then we provide the information that they want. And help with the safety plan. So, any other questions?
Thank you very much for the work that you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
With that, I'd move approval of the proclamation for Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Reddick. Any other questions or comments on this proclamation? With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Item nine, Crossroads of Western Iowa. Approval and presentation of proclamation for National Disability Employment Awareness Month. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
And you are?
I'm Velvet Jarotowski from Crossroads of Western Iowa.
Somebody, that doesn't sound right.
No. It's like old home week, I'll tell you that. And yes, I would like you to...
Velvet, would you like me to read this proclamation?
I would love for you to do that.
I bet you would. Woodbury County, Iowa, proclamation, whereas persons with disabilities have the right and responsibility to maximize their abilities, and whereas persons with disabilities have an equal capacity for productivity, independence, and integration throughout society, and whereas persons with disabilities are the minority group with the highest unemployment rate, and whereas any person may become a member of this minority group at any time, and whereas disability is not a deficiency but a vital part of the diversity of the human community, and whereas through awareness, training, and support, persons with disabilities can access opportunities to employment, enabling them to become integrated and contributing citizens of Iowa, and whereas this year's theme is America's Workforce, Empowering All, and whereas the Iowa Commission of Persons with Disabilities and the Iowa Department of Human Rights promotes employment and maximized independence and integration of persons with disabilities throughout Iowa, and now therefore, I, Rocky D. Witt, do hereby proclaim October 28th, October 2018, as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. In quotations, as a time to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of America's workers with disabilities in Woodbury County, Iowa. Be it so resolved the second day of October, 2018. Do we have any questions for Ms. Jarotowski?
Does anybody want to know what Crossroads of Western Iowa is all about?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I will tell you. Crossroads of Western Iowa is a disability provider that's been in Siouxland for a little over four years now. We provide opportunities for individuals with disability to live independent, work independent, and have our day program, which is located at 835 Gordon Drive. Even though we've only been in Sioux City for four years, Crossroads as a whole has been in existence for over 40 years, starting in Anewa with a day program, growing to Missouri Valley, a corporate office in Council Bluffs, and then two new locations in Atlantic and Cherokee. So, we're able to spread this opportunity for individuals with disabilities with these three different programs. We serve over 500 clients as a whole, but in Sioux City, we have put 22 individuals to work since July. We have 11 homes housing 38 individuals which are living independently on their own with the help of Crossroads, and we have our day program that's serving 17 individuals since we just started it. So, in regards to this proclamation, we, as a company, are providing opportunities for employment for over 350 clients, so we appreciate you giving us the spotlight for this month.
Further questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a great night.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Reddick, second by Potabom, to approve National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Item 10, Sioux City Parks and Recreation, request for financial support of the riverfront redevelopment project.
Hi, thanks for having me here today. Matt Salator, Parks and Recreation Director of the city of Sioux City. With me is Angel Wallace, Parks and Recreation Manager, and Cindy Brewer, she's our Park Board President, a member of our Riverfront Steering Committee. The committee and the park board have been hard at work on this project in the planning phase over the last two or three years. We're looking to raise, get into the fundraising phase of this project for the riverfront redevelopment project where the former Argus Sea Casino used to be located. The riverfront is the front door to our community. It's one of the first things that people see as they drive through, so we think it's one of the most important projects that the city, the county, and Siouxland take on. It's a $14.5 million project. The city of Sioux City has $6.5 million programmed over the next two fiscal years. We are hoping to leverage funds to be, so we're eligible for an enhanced Iowa, our Community Attraction Tourism Grant through the state of Iowa. It's approximately a $500,000 to $600,000 grant. In order to be eligible for this grant, we need city, county, and private funding support. Woodbury County was instrumental back in 2015 for our Cone Park Project. $50,000 from the county was contributing towards the Cone Park Project, would help us leverage a $300,000 CAT grant. So, we are requesting $150,000 from the county for this project. This could be budgeted over the next two fiscal years. The goal is to break down, break ground in the spring of 2020, when the interstate project has been completed, and we are working through the design phase right now. We're going to be through about 35% design in January, and then we'll continue on with full design. So, with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions you may have about the project.
Just give us an overview, Matt, of the size and scope of the redevelopment project, what all is entailed, what amenities would county residents and of course the city residents see with that development?
Sure. So, the area that we're looking to redevelop is basically between Virginia and Floyd, all the way to the Floyd River. It's approximately 15 acres. So, we have amenities that spread throughout the park. Starting in the west, we have a major amenities, a Stockyard Garden Plaza, we have an overlooking shelter at Virginia, we have an agri-lawn, an event lawn, a yoga lawn, the regional trail that will eventually connect all the way to Chautauqua Park, goes through this area. That includes a promenade, we have a Floyd Pavilion overlook, elevation to the area near the interstate, we call Experation Ridge, which includes some play nodes, we have exercise nodes scattered throughout the park, we have a dog park, basketball courts, active recreation area, smaller shelters scattered throughout the space, and we're working on an iconic feature. We're working through that. We actually had our architect in town today, Smith Group, they are working on a lighting, water feature as our iconic feature, the big-ticket item, that really draws people to the space.
Ferris wheel?
That is still an option, but the bigger-ticket item, lighting slash water feature is kind of where the steering committee is going at this point, so we think the Ferris wheel's more on the back burner at this point.
And any tangential connection to the whole reinvestment district in this? I know it's probably outside of that 25-acre...
It's outside the 25 acres.
But is there any sort of long-term vision in how to connect those from kind of a city planning, Parks and Rec?
Yeah, it's naturally connected through, which is a separate project, our riverfront trail project, which connects Chris Larson Park to Chautauqua Park. It's a mile and a half trail with two pedestrian bridges over the Floyd River and over the Bacon Channel. So, that will connect the former Stockyards area, Chautauqua Park, Chris Larson Park. It's one of the most crucial trail connections that we have in all of Siouxland, so we're excited about that. We're going through an Army Corps of Engineer 408 permit process. We're hoping to be able to break ground in the spring on that project.
Sure. Two-part question. How did you come to the $150,000, and then what is the size of the tourism grant that you will be applying for, or do you know that yet?
Yeah, we're looking between, we'll be eligible in somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000 for the tourism grant. I based the request based on the scale and magnitude of the project. $14.5 million, when we did the Cone Park request, we got $50,000, and that was based on a $300,000 grant. So, I just thought we, the likelihood of us getting the grant, the more county support would bump us up in scoring, based on the overall price tag of the project.
What's a city's investment?
Right now, we have, it hasn't been approved, but in the city's CIP, there's $6.5 million programmed right now. And so, that would be a big topic of conversation as we head into budget hearings this winter.
You mentioned that it could be spread over two fiscal years, could be spread over four? Or two is really kind of the...
Probably, probably two, based on the grant funding cycle. It's possible to do it longer based on where we're at with fundraising. Obviously, a big component of this project would be private fundraising, so 6.5 is the basic infrastructure, utilities, grading, basic plantings, some paving, that's the base cost for the project. Eight, the eight million, the other $8 million is the amenities.
How, I'll let you go next.
You said Virginia to Floyd?
Yeah, a little bit past Virginia.
I was going to say, what are they going to do from Virginia to the Anderson Pavilion?
The main, the central part of the project is Virginia to Floyd, and then there's some outlined amenities to the west of, or to the, yeah, to the west of Virginia and to the east of Floyd.
Because I presume the pavilion's going to stay there?
Mm-hmm, yep.
All that park equipment's brand new, too.
How, have you started with the private donation part of it yet, or...
We are finalizing our campaign materials, and we're going to be starting on that very soon. So, we were hoping to hit the February Community Attraction Tourism Grant cycle. That's the next time they're accepting applications, February.
Is the remaining amount programmed to come from those private donations, or...
Grants and private donations, yep.
I looked into the grant quite a bit there, and I see Des Moines has a similar, you know, trail park-type project in there. Of course, they're asking for a million dollar, or their, the highest amount you can get, I can't remember what it is. The requirement, of course, is county participation as well. I talked to Dennis earlier this morning, kind of looking at where our funds are. We don't have a whole lot extra. In fact, we're already spending more in '19 than what we're taking in, so it's already taken down reserves, and now we got a roof to pay for, for Gary here. You'll probably get that, Gary. But, you know, looking at some things that maybe aren't going to come in as high as possible, and maybe Dennis, you want to cover that, but some of the strategic planning costs for the rural comprehensive planning might not be as much as what they thought, and some of the Simcoe memberships, not as much as what we thought. So, we had looked at like a potential for up to $10,000 in '19, and I don't know where we're at in '20, but it's, you know, I've got a copy of the report.
Sure, yeah.
There's just not a whole lot of extra county funds where we're sitting at. And I do see, you know, at the, at that grant amount, you're going to have to raise another $3 million to cover the amenities essentially to get the grant. So, and I think you can do that.
Yeah.
I think it's possible.
We've been very aggressive with our grant writing. We're on four grants right now.
Okay.
So, we're hoping we have some success as those awards start coming out.
And then also, the nature of this project is slightly different than, say, a Cone Park. You know, Cone Park can bring people to the area, have them spend more money in sales tax, you know, it's a bigger draw, maybe hotel motel tax, where you're probably not going to get that so much with the trail system or the riverfront upgrades, you know. So, it's harder to justify, you know, to your county resident how it's going to help them, or to say, Mova, who might want to request some funds in the future, well, you did this for Sioux City. So, obviously, we want to be a partner with you. I do, but I can't speak for everyone, but that's just what I found. And I don't know, Dennis, did you want to go off on anymore, maybe 2020, where we'd be at, or...
This is just an informational item, anyway, to give information to you gentlemen here. I think it's something we can look at during budget cycle in January, February, have a better idea of where we're at, better estimates on any increase in sales tax revenues possibly. We usually get an estimate probably next month or two. And then potentially, at budget time, we look how we're spending, what we are spending on local option, sales tax funds, and see if there's places that need to be cut or moved, things like that. But I'd say wait till January, February, and this is an action item anyway, to come back to.
What does that do with your timeline of the application on the CAT grant, man?
I believe it's due February 15th. We have to have some other fundraising in place, too, so, I mean, I would be happy to come back and check in in January to see...
But you'd probably want it earlier in the budget process...
Yeah.
Rather than later, like not March 13th?
That would help us for preparing. We'll probably start to put the application together anyway, so when we are ready, we'll be able to submit that.
March 14th probably wouldn't be a timely matter.
Right, right.
They do, there's quarterly grant cycles, but our goal was to obviously keep things moving and try to hit the next one.
And it's as specific as stipulating that county participation is necessary in order to realize this?
It doesn't spell out the level of participation.
Right, right.
But obviously, you know, it should be...
Can't be $50.
Yeah, it's not going to be 50 bucks, and I...
Sometimes those are negotiated kind of after the fact.
Sure. And I hate to like throw a number out there as, this is what we have in '19, and, you know, when you're asking 150, but, I mean, the reality is where it's at in FY '19 for us.
Are you guys July, July 1 to June 30 as well? So, yeah, I was thinking FY '20, '21.
'20, '21, okay.
And in some of those comprehensive studies, those are the ones that you mentioned?
Yes.
What's the ticket price on those essentially?
The one we have here is $93,000, another one is $7,200, another one is $2,400.
But those are still left over? That was left over from FY '17.
We're all concerned, comprehensive planning, it's a three-year program, we're on our last year, so I have asked David to come back with estimates, you know, what he could have left, or we could de-obligate, and that's for this current fiscal year.
But I'm talking about FY, since we're talking about FY '20 and '21.
The strategic planning will probably be gone, the simple dues will probably be gone, there's a couple that don't want them, so there's $9,000, $10,000 there. There's a couple that don't want them, so there's $9,000, $10,000 there. And we do have $143,000 unobligated at this mall for this current year. So a combination of factors that could affect their request, possibly making it or not making it, we'll know more in January. I'd say we do it the first part of January.
Well, I'd like to see us eventually participate at some level because of the stipulations, just like we have with the reinvestment district, just like we have with Cone Park. I would note that those were about 10.8 to 16.7%, and this is more like at the 25% threshold. But at some level, or somewhere maybe in between, based on whether those funds are there or not, it looks like in '20 and '21, there may be opportunities. So early in January, I would, you know, again, I'm one person, but I think that that may be something that is a possibility.
Yeah?
Yeah, I agree. I want to see us take part, just to make sure that it's done. The amount will be what we talk about in January.
Because the grant you're applying for, you said around $200,000?
No, the actual grant would be between $500,000 and $600,000.
$500,000, okay.
So I was just thinking on the high end, if we were in at 150 for 600, you know, at 25% versus on the $13.9 million kind of sales tax stiff, if we had one and a half, we're in at about 10.8%, and on Cone Park, at $300,000, we were in at 50, about 16.7%. So I was just kind of looking, not that that's magic as far as precedence, but it might be something to follow.
And you also got to follow the justification to the taxpayer at the county level, too. So there's a little bit of both.
Sure.
We're gonna have to balance out, so.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
While they're here, I just want to say thank you to Angel. They cooperate with us every year at the Long Lines Family Center. We do about two weeks of satellite voting down there. They've always been very cooperative, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thanks again. Emergency Services, approval of quote for repairs on the third floor roof of the Climbing Hill Emergency Services Building.
That's Jay Brown, Woodbury County Emergency Services. On the third floor, the roofs are in great condition, but it's where the roof comes over and meets the fascia board. That fascia board up on the third floor to the north is rotted out. So we've got an opening to the outside, which is letting out heat, and it's letting in moisture, and now we're starting our own little bat farm up on the third floor. And I don't know if you read the request for action memo, but it was clearly written by somebody that doesn't like bats, by the name of Dawn.
I think the term "will continue to colonize" was an indication that they don't like...
Yeah, she, she does not like things that fly inside the building, so...
Is there a potential to make money off this bat farm?
Well, there's potential to have health problems.
Have you told her that the bats are more afraid of her than she is of them?
I would bet not.
Why don't you stop by and let her know that?
Next time I'm in the neighborhood, I'll bring it up.
Yeah, stop by and let her know that they're more afraid of her. She does a great job for us, but it is an issue with... We did have this in a couple of budget requests, which was a whole tuck pointing project, which hasn't been funded otherwise, just wanted to bring that, but it's definitely a need. The low bid is from Guaranteed Roofing for 28, 31, 41, not to exceed. Quote that we got from them is not to exceed. It's quite a bit of work. They've got to pull the gutters off, pull the roof loose, put new fascia board in, and put it all back together. So they're gonna use a weatherproof material, so it shouldn't rot out in the next 10 years or 20 years.
I'll move it.
Second.
And Dennis, do you know where we're gonna get the money for this?
Talking with Kenny, you could not make it tonight, but it's out of Project B4-17, so it'll be out our fiscal year 2017. Funds are left over from various projects.
From CIP?
Yes.
I'm sorry, who moved that? And who seconded?
Radig and Taylor.
Thank you. Any other questions for Gary or Dennis on the issue? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
On behalf of Dawn, thank you.
If it's that important, she should have been here.
She's watching.
She's feeding the bats.
Item 12, Secondary Roads, approved contract for 2018 gravel production and stockpiles.
Good afternoon. We have three contracts for board approval today. The first is for gravel production at the Breezy Pit, the gravel pit that we just purchased this spring. We're producing 75,500 tons, 725 a ton, for a total of $547,375.
Is this, is this somewhat related to what we were discussing earlier?
This is our annual maintenance gravel, so this is what we have within our normal operating budget for maintaining the roads in the best condition we're able to.
So in other words, is this typical routine standard?
This is our every-year purchase.
Not really because of any other discussions on...
No, this is separate from our discussion. This is basically replacement gravel for losses over the course of the year, as much as we can afford, anyway.
And this is all, generally speaking, within your budget?
Yes, this was in my line item for granular servicing.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom. This is one motion approves all.
If you want to do all three. The second one is for 51,600 tons, it's 665 per ton. That's at our railroad pit. The price is higher at Breezy this year. It's the first year gravel's been produced out of that area in a number of years. The contractor who bid was the only bidder for production there, is concerned about his ability to deepwater the pit. So he bid a little bit of risk into there. He said if everything goes well, they should be able to lower that price next year. That's the difference in 665, where we have no water in the pit, and 725, where we're doing substantial deepwatering of the pit. And then the final contract is for trucking, and this is to haul to our stockpiles that are scattered around the county for use by our maintenance staff. A total of 68,000 tons of the production is being hauled to the various stockpiles in the county. There'll be two stockpiles for the District Three maintenance, one in Breezy Pit, one in Railroad Pit. That's District Three is Correction Bill, so, I mean, both ones for their gravel needs north of Highway 20, and then the one in the Breezy Pits for south of Highway 20. And again, this is what we stockpile each year by contract.
I'll amend the motion to include all three.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom, amended to approve all three contracts. Any further questions for Mr. Nara? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Item 13, Reports on Committee Meetings. Item 14, Second Round of Citizen Concerns. Hearing none. Item 15, Board Concerns.
Wednesday, October 31st, I believe is the TSI luncheon, and at noon, I'm planning to attend to this ladies' on there and wondered if anybody else is. I know it's a little ways out, but if you are, maybe just check your calendars and let's see if there's gonna be...
October 31st?
The Admiral Winifield, I think I got that name right, we've met him before, if you were on the DC trip, so I believe he's gonna be the keynote, but just a heads up there.
Okay. Anybody else?
We might want to find out as far as the appreciation picnic for the Conservation Board. If we're gonna have enough people, then we better make sure we post a...
I plan to go at this point.
Yeah, right now, I plan on going, too, so...
And I plan on going as well.
Are you?
I don't think so. I don't believe I will, but either will.
Oh, there'll be three of us, so we have to...
Wasn't there also a VA deal thing?
There is. Jeremy said he's planning on going, so...
Yeah, but Matthew's not, and I'm not, neither is Keith.
I thought you said you were.
I said, yeah.
Oh, you did, okay.
That's right, I said there's three of us.
So we would need to post that, Karen? Okay.
Or what about Veterans Affairs Office? Weren't they planning to do a deal out of... Was that the mailing we got last week?
Yes. I'm just looking to see.
Sir?
Another one you might want to post is the ribbon cutting. I don't know how many...
Oh, yeah. I do plan to go to that.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah, what's the date on that?
October...
19th?
18th or 19th?
At 3 o'clock, yeah.
19th?
It's at Alders, Alders Hotel, yeah.
Holstein, yep.
Yeah.
Very nice location.
All right, any other board concerns?
I've, just want to let you know that early voting starts on Monday, October 8th, and we are sending, the Auditor's Office is sending out our mailing that we do, that we've been doing before every election. Addition to it this year is that we're sending out a sample ballot for, that is, for every person will get an actual sample ballot of the district that they live in. That's new. We've done that for voter education purposes, to let them know that straight party voting is no longer allowed in Iowa, so that they'll get that. The reason I want to bring it up is that in Lynn County, they sent them out, and people actually voted them and sent them back.
That's what I heard. They filled them out and sent them back in.
So we're trying to avoid that. We think Woodbury County voters are smarter than Lynn County voters.
That's Eastern Iowa, though, so...
And just for information, I won't be here next week. I'll be at the State Police Convention. I hope to call in, so that's the day of our education. We have the police captain from the shooting in Connecticut that's gonna be presenting, so if it's over in time, I'll be calling in.
Anything else? We are adjourned.